We call to honor the Tuesday, February 1st, 2022, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I feel everyone please bow your head and ask for the protection and provision of our nation, our state, Iredell County, and our communities. If you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for us.
At this time, Ms. Muller, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir. Chairman Mallory, we don't have any adjustments this evening.
Okay, there are no presentations of any special recognitions this evening. Appointments before the board, we have an update on the draft 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. I believe Neil Burke or Travis Johnson should be here. And Matthew Todd is also in the area. There we go. Good evening. Welcome.
Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you for having us. Really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak tonight about the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. My name is Travis Johnson. I work for the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization. And I'm your host, Neil Burke, who's also representative of them as well. Tonight, we wanted to give you an overview of what, who we are as an organization, who the CRTPO is, and what the Metropolitan Transportation Plan is and how it kind of connects to the region. And we want to go over the MTP development schedule for what we have done and highlight key components that would matter to this area, focusing on the project list and just what the document contains. Oh, sorry. It's been a minute. And at the end, we'll have time to address any questions you might have on the plan and what we present here. So what is the CRTPO? Well, we are the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Charlotte urbanized area. So that covers all of Iredell County, all of Mecklenburg County, and a portion of Union County. It is federally designated and is required of all urbanized areas with a population over 50,000. So our role in the area is to conduct transportation planning activities, coordinate with regional agencies, and engage the public. We also allocate federal transportation funds to eligible projects, and we maintain plans and programs in compliance with federal regulations. So looking at the image to you on the screen, you can see the idea phase. That's where we work with communities that have transportation plans, like the Iredell Transportation Plan, where we get projects that feed into the comprehensive transportation plan, which then feeds into the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is what we're here to speak about tonight, and it continues on to the Transportation Improvement Program. So the MTP is, it's a long-range transportation plan that's established goals and objectives for priorities in the region for the next 20 years. It considers all modes of surface transportation and also takes into account the impacts on the environment and the economy, public health, and overall quality of life. The plan must be fiscally constrained, meaning the projects in the plan can be implemented using committed or anticipated revenues, and this plan must be updated a minimum of every four years. So this is similar to the plan that you've recently completed for the Iredell County Transportation Master Plan, but the big difference is being that this covers the three-county region, and we both have projects, programs, and policies, but the projects in this plan would get, come from the comprehensive transportation plan, and all these projects would need to be fiscally constrained. So in looking at your master plan, the next step for your projects in that plan would then to be, to be added to the comprehensive transportation plan to start the process of being funded through this system. So this project started in July of 2020, is when we had the original project kickoff, and we've been engaging with the public, working through the draft documents, going through analysis of the projects all through 2021, which just gets us here to today in 2022, where we are working to, where we have released the draft plan, we are collecting feedback, and we are scheduled to go before the board for adoption in March. This plan incorporates a lot of different goals and objectives for the region as a whole. We then took into account different scenarios, such as new technology, land use patterns, and we also identified different performance management techniques to identify ways to monitor and to evaluate how the projects have been successful or where they stand in that process. We then looked at the money that we had available in the 2032 STIP. Then we looked at projected year funding for 2033 and 2050, and then that became the total available funds that we have planned that are available for the 2050 MTP. We then had member jurisdictions submit projects, and then we went through a two-tier evaluation process that took into account available funds, going through the different steps that were required, and then that's what got us to our draft project list, which is available online as part of the plan. Now I'm going to hand this over to Neil Burke, who's going to talk about the overall project process.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Neil.
Any questions about the general plan development process for the 2050 MTP? I'm going to get into a little more detail about specifically how we made assumptions about available revenue and the project list for the 2050 MTP. So within this Metropolitan Transportation Plan, there are four planned horizon years that are defined, 2025, 2035, 2045, and 2050. We had member jurisdictions, you know, such as the Iredell County and the jurisdictions within Iredell County, as well as the other, throughout our planning area, submit roadway projects, and we organize those by strategic transportation investments categories. So that's the state law that really governs how, how infrastructure funding is assigned to roadway projects. We brought the financial projections before the CRTPO Board of Elected Officials. They approved those last year. They also approved the ranking methodology in which we rank the projects. Then we evaluated the candidate projects. We received 240 of those. We scored the projects and developed cost estimates for those projects. Based upon the available funding, we assigned the high priority projects to horizon years, and we've conducted around a public engagement on the fiscally constrained roadway projects. But what we're here to, to talk to you about tonight is the draft plan that really accompanies the, the all-encompassing planning process we've been working on for almost two years. Travis mentioned fiscal constraint in one of his earlier slides, and really what this is, is we calculate the anticipated revenue throughout the life of the plan from 2021 through 2050. We do that again based upon what we know in that 10-year planning document that NCDOT prepares, the State Transportation Improvement Program, and then we estimate what might happen between 2030 and 2050. So the concept of fiscal constraint is the projects that we have within this 2050 MTP, we have to demonstrate that there's a reasonable assumption that they, they can be funded and they can be complete by the, the life of the plan when that, that ends in, in 2050. I mentioned the STI categories. Again, this is governed in state law, Strategic Transportation Investments. This law was passed in 2013, and it segments the funding into, into three tranches, basically. Statewide Mobility, that's 40% of the available funds for roadway projects throughout the state. These are your, your interstates, Interstate 40, Interstate 77, and, and the competition there is, you know, you're competing statewide. Your projects that CRTPO submits are competing against interstate projects in Wilmington, Asheville, Raleigh, et cetera. Moving into the regional impact here, this is 30% of the available funds, and CRTPO is split into two different funding regions. We have Iredell County, which is in Funding Region F. That's a combination of Divisions 11 and 12. And then we have Funding Region E, which is Mecklenburg and Union, and that's a combination of Divisions 8 and 10. So the point to take away there is the projects in STI that are submitted in Iredell, and even in this plan, are not necessarily competing with projects in Mecklenburg and Union Counties. They're in two separate funding regions. There's two separate funding allocations for, for these funding regions. Moving into the Division Needs tier, that's the remaining 30% of the available funds. And this is really addressing local needs on the secondary route system. So still NCDOT-maintained roadways, but these aren't the, the marked roadways. They're not your US 21s, your 115s. These are more the Buffalo Shoals roads and Old Mountain Roads, for instance. And again, similar to the regional impact tier, we're in two different funding regions in the Division Needs tier. There's Division 12, which in the CRTPO planning area, that's Iredell County, and then Division 10 is Mecklenburg and Union. So two separate pots of, of funding there in STI and also in our assumptions for this 2050 MTP. We use geography as the, the indicator for, for our population estimates. So what we do is we look at the estimated population share in the five funding geographies throughout CRTPO to determine the percent of available funding in, in the MTP for each of our STI funding categories. So for instance, here in Iredell County, again, regional impact here, you're in Funding Region F. So Iredell County is 15% of the population of that eight-county funding region. So we use that when we, when we look at the amount of available funding. Same thing with Division 12. Iredell County is 23% of the population of Division 12, that's six-county NCDOT division. So we, again, we use that 23% when we're making assumptions about how we allocate the funding. Little more detail about Funding Region F here. You can see the map there. It's the combination of Divisions 11 and 12. As I mentioned, CRTPO contains 15% of the population for Funding Region F. So looking at our three horizon years here, there's $1.6 billion assumed for those regional impact projects in Funding Region F throughout the life of the MTP. And using that 15% assumption about Iredell County, there's $239 million assumed for funding for those types of projects along, say, US 21, 115. So you can see the breakdown there, 2035 Horizon Year, $34 million, 2045, $130 million, and 2050, $75 million. Moving into Division 12, $584 million is assumed for anticipated revenue throughout the life of the MTP for Division 12. Again, taking that population estimate of 23%, Iredell County is 23% of the population of that six-county NCDOT division. So there's $134 million assumed for CRTPO funding for Division Needs projects in Division 12. And once again, you can see the, the breakdown there in green for the different horizon years and what would be available within those horizon years for projects in, in Iredell County. So a little more information about the financial projections. These projections are snapshot in time. They're based upon NCDOT's Revised 2020 through 2029 State Transportation Improvement Program. This was adopted by the Board of Transportation in October 20th. So you all have heard about the project delays NCDOT has undergone in the last year or two. It does not reflect the full scope of those delays. The reason why is we are under a deadline from Federal Highway Administration to update the, to adopt the MTP by March of 2022. That's a requirement for MPOs. They have to refresh their MTPs every four years. So what we will do is we will conduct future MTP amendments to account for what the real revenue projections are. And that is the beauty of updating these plans every four years, is things change, priorities change, funding changes. You know, there's also the federal bipartisan infrastructure bill that will inject some funding into STI and into these projections. It won't completely solve the problem at the state level, but it will provide some additional funding to kind of lessen that gap a little bit. And that, you know, is still in progress because the federal rulemaking and allocation to each, each state is still being determined. I know I talked a lot in my first couple of slides. I just want to pause and just make sure if the commissioners have any questions before I proceed.
So the revenues during the delay, did you, did you say that those revenues are lost, or will those revenues be added to projects ongoing? What, when you, during the delay, what happened to the revenue that would have been spent for, for our projects during that?
So basically, there isn't any, there, there's a cash flow issue with NCDOT, and that's affecting some of the assumptions here. What happens is it pushed more of the revenue to the middle part of our planning process because the, you know, NCDOT is kind of overcommitted on projects currently. So you see that impact where more funding is being assigned to projects in the 2035 Horizon Year.
It's not just revenue, it's costs.
That, that's true, too.
Those have increased significantly, right-of-way acquisition costs, the, just the material, the time. It, you know, every delay inflation is causing construction materials to go up, and just having Duke Energy move their lines in the right-of-way takes an unusually long period of time.
That's a great point. Yeah, that's definitely contributing to the, the financial issues. And, and construction, you know, it's just, it's a very, it's a variable industry, obviously, in terms of materials availability and other, other issues. That's definitely a factor here. So moving into the fiscally constrained roadway projects, as I mentioned, the jurisdictions throughout CRTPO submitted 240 candidate projects early in 2021, and using that two-tiered ranking process where the first tier really measures congestion, safety, accessibility to employment, we took that 240 and we brought it down to 106 based upon project score because, again, we had many more needs, as you can imagine, than available funding. So taking it into tier two, we use more qualitative evaluations in terms of environmental justice, impacts to community resources, benefit cost, and that, these projects received, the 106 projects received a tier two score. And then based upon the available revenue, that gave us 52 new projects that we, that we added into the, the 2050 MTP. So you can kind of see that progression as to what was submitted, what made it from tier one into tier two, and then the projects that ultimately advanced and, and made it into the fiscally constrained roadway projects. But we don't just have 52 projects. There are already 104 projects that already had NCDOT funding committed, so those are automatically added into the, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. So we have 156 total fiscally constrained projects throughout Iredell, Mecklenburg, and Union Counties. You can see the locations there on the right of the, the new projects are in blue, and the existing committed projects are in green. You can see a breakdown of where these projects are by county, and I will go into more detail about this. This is just a high level. There are 27 projects in Iredell County. There's 109 in Mecklenburg and 20 projects in Union. On the right-hand side, you can see the types of projects. The majority of these projects are widening projects, so it's an existing roadway, most cases, two-lane, undivided. The scopes of these projects are taking it to at least a four-lane median divided, many times with bicycle and pedestrian accommodations where there weren't any already. There are 48 projects where we're improving an existing interchange or intersection, 22 projects where we're recommending the construction of a new roadway. So the roadway is not there today, but this will benefit connectivity and lessen congestion on the existing facilities. And then three of these projects are new interchange projects along the freeway system. So I want to get into a little more detail about Iredell County. I know there's a lot of interest in transportation with the county recently completing its master plan. There are 27 roadway projects that made it into the fiscally constrained plan, over a billion dollars' worth of investment and 30 miles of new lane miles or new projects. You can see the breakdown here. We have the four horizon years in the MTP. 11 of those 27 projects are in the first horizon year, another 11 are in 2035. We have three projects in 2045 and two in 2050. And that, that's common to see that when you look at it at the county level. We know much more about the available funding earlier in the plan and the last two horizon years, not like we just don't know anything, but it's more of a guess. So, and again, we update the plan every four years, so every four years, we get a whole new set of horizon years. Looking at it by STI category, there are two of those 27 projects in the statewide tier, again, along the freeway system. There are 13 projects in Funding Region F. Again, this is the, the tier that has NC 150, 115, 901, 21, and then 12 projects in Division 12. Again, your, your Brawley School roads, Old Mountain roads, et cetera. These slides are intended to just show the specific projects. I will not go into detail about each project, but I'll just kind of call out the type of project it is. On the left-hand side, you can see the project name. The second column, you can see the municipality. We have the estimated cost in millions of dollars, and then on the right-hand side, you can see the, the MTP Horizon Year that it's assigned. And the earlier projects appear closer to the top. I know there's a lot of information in this presentation, so we'll certainly make it available to the board after this. But these first round of projects here are the, the new interchange projects or improving existing interchanges. This slide depicts new roadway projects. Again, these are projects on new alignment, projects that are not there today necessarily. So, yeah, these are mostly projects, again, in 2025 and 2035 Horizon Year of the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. These are the roadway widenings. And again, vast majority of the projects in Iredell County are, are widening or adding capacity to an existing roadway. And again, these are roadway widening projects in the latter parts of our plan in the 2045 and 2050 horizon years. Another way to slice these projects up is to look at them roughly within which jurisdiction they, they lie in. You know, out of the 27 projects, no surprise, you know, the, most of them are, are in the larger cities within the county, in Mooresville and in Statesville, but you can see that there's some geographic spread with Troutman and, and some projects kind of in, in the unincorporated county within our fiscally constrained plan. This plan is not just about roadway projects. There are bicycle and pedestrian projects with committed funding that are moving forward within the next five to 10 years. You can see the location of these projects. There's several in Iredell County, and then the project type on the left-hand side. Most of these are constructing new greenways. There's five sidewalk projects and then three other improvements really to, you know, facilitate better walking and biking throughout our planning area. This project also does consider transit. We did coordinate with the Iredell County Area Transit System and the funding projections for transit throughout this, this plan, and we will consider amending this plan, you know, as transit agencies identify funding for capital projects. So just because we're seeking adoption of this plan in two months, again, we'll continue to coordinate with the transit agencies and with our member jurisdictions and make amendments as necessary. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it back over to Travis to finish off the presentation. We still have a few more slides. I know I covered a lot of information about the roadway projects and funding. Any questions for me before we turn it back to Travis?
Neil, recently, a public comment period has opened up relative to a proposed bridge across the Catawba River, joining Mecklenburg and Gaston County. Now, that impacts Iredell County because of being in the same division as Gaston County. So it certainly impacts that local funding pot. It also, I would imagine, impacts the regional funding pot that would include us because of Mecklenburg. The, where does that particular project? I noted on a slide back there, you had it marked in sort of dark blue in the 2035 Horizon Year. So that funding projection is $200 million. Can you walk us through the, the application of the normal guidelines as it relates to congestion or other factors that would justify that level of expense for that project?
Sure. Chairman Mallory, I believe you're referring to the Catawba Crossings project. There's a current NCDOT feasibility study on that. And in the context of developing the 2050 MTP, we coordinated with our adjoining MPO, which is the Gaston, Cleveland-Lincoln MPO. Both CRTPO and Gaston, you know, the, the study's still ongoing to determine what this project will be and what STI tier it is in and, you know, how much it costs, but we still felt it was a priority at CRTPO and Gaston, Cleveland-Lincoln, to submit it for evaluation in our own MTPs. So we did that, and it turned out that, you know, it is such an expensive project in both of our plans. And, you know, we would assume, I think roughly 20% of the cost because most of that project is in Gaston, Cleveland-Lincoln, but the result of running the Catawba Crossings project through that, through our ranking process and through the Gaston, Cleveland-Lincoln's, it didn't score well enough to, to be able to fund it. So the Gaston, you know, we did evaluate the Catawba Crossings project, but it did not make it into the fiscally constrained roadway project list. And, and speaking for CRTPO, when the next round of prioritization opens up for NCDOT, we look to our fiscally constrained roadway project list from our most recent MTP in terms of projects that we submit for, for, for consideration of NCDOT funding. And since that project is not on our, our list, we won't submit it, but that won't necessarily stop Gaston, Cleveland-Lincoln from submitting it. Another wrinkle with that is, you know, what NCDOT is going to do this year is they're, they have that $12 billion funding gap just with projects they've committed to fund. So they're going to have to cut out a, a, a large number of projects that were previously funded. So what we'll have to do and all the other MPOs around the state is look at those committed projects, and Catawba Crossings has never been a committed project, but we'll have to look at projects that we thought were going to be delivered and, and submit those again. So not to say Gaston, Cleveland-Lincoln won't submit it, but I'm fairly confident that CRTPO will not submit that for the next round of prioritization.
So the public comment period is designed to influence what particular decision in the, in the whole timeline of the CRTPO's planning horizons?
This, so this is the third phase of public engagement that we've undertaken for the 2050 MTP, and the focus is really on the draft document that really culminates in, in all the planning work that Travis and I have been discussing. But if you have specific comments you want to make about projects or any level of detail, we, we are really looking for, you know, your priorities in this county, your residents' priorities. We want to make sure you all have a chance to review what we've put together and, and let us know what, what you think, if it, if it is reasonable for the priorities for this, this region in the next 20-plus years.
Regarding the infrastructure funding that was recently enacted at the federal level, when North Carolina gets its share, is that simply going to be injected into the current plan and fund the projects as they have been prioritized? Or is piece parts of that going to be directed to other special projects that may not even appear, such as Catawba Crossing?
Yeah, that's a good question. And as I mentioned, you know, USDOT is kind of in that rulemaking process right now. The funding that is coming to North Carolina, it's not necessarily known yet, but not all of it will go to STI. There's a lot of other programs, and that, that federal bill isn't just about surface transportation. There's a lot of other infrastructure programs in there. So once we understand that, we'll have a better idea of the implications as to how we would amend the financial assumptions in this plan. And it, it depends on the timing, too. I'm not sure how long this rulemaking process will take, but if it's far enough out that we need to start working on our 2055 MTP, we may not necessarily amend this, but we may just start working on our, our new plan where we have a whole different level of assumptions, a whole new opportunity for Iredell County and the other jurisdictions to submit their priority projects to us. So we'll just have to kind of see how the timing plays out with that, you know, because I think the first thing that's going to happen that'll really affect the financial projections, obviously, is the decisions that NCDOT makes this year regarding the funding gap and which projects actually remain committed, which projects have to be reevaluated, and how, how does that translate into financial assumptions in the MTP plans? We'll have to continue to, to work with NCDOT on that.
Well, if you don't mind taking a little editorializing right now, I'll just say that, having reviewed that plan, it looks to me like not a plan, not a, not a project that is that is, as you said, would score well using the normal STI rules that have been established, starting, number one, with congestion. That, given the location, that it's basically an economic development project, which on either end of it serves undeveloped tracks, which would certainly attract development in those areas. But currently, there's not a demand. It doesn't seem to me it would relieve congestion on 85 and 74 because it's too far north for folks that are on 85 or 74 to say, oh, it's really congested. I'm going to detour way down here to take Catawba Crossings. It's, they'd be more likely to go up to Mount Holly and go across Mount Holly Road and come on down to 485. So I'm concerned about it because, you know, unless it's just manna from heaven from the feds directed to that spot, that it's, it's an opportunity cost. Clearly, Gaston County, this is a shiny object for them. They see that as a huge economic development driver. And if I was sitting in Gastonia, I'd probably be singing a different tune. But if it goes through sort of the regular STI process and the funding, you know, whatever goes out to support that project is coming out of some other projects, is bumping other projects further down the road. And I'm especially concerned at the division level as well as the region. I don't think it, I don't think it would qualify in a minute for statewide mobility.
No.
So, you know, just a, just an impression, first impression, so that you can take that back. I feel pretty strongly about, if you have an economic development focus, figure out a funding stream, like putting a toll road, toll bridge, whatever, or development fees for the tracks that are going to be the beneficiary of not just one bridge, but two bridges.
Would it, would it be beneficial for us to take a formal position to send to you as, because if, the projects you showed for Iredell County for our citizens, when you, when you show the project, that means it's approved and the, and the figures are the monies that have been estimated. Are those monies ever earmarked to prevent what happened in 2020 and misuse of funds and those projects being not able to be completed because someone didn't earmark those funds and protect them? What helps you help us protect that money and earmark it? And can we take a formal position and send it to you of those priorities that's been approved to stave those priorities and to ask that the US DOT monies that come to the state go to fund the projects or overages for the projects due to cost of materials and construction that are already prioritized and setting, waiting to go? Because we're already behind on some of the unfunded projects. So would it not help you from each county's board, we need to take a formal position to send you guys to protect our projects from Iredell County and ask that that money be earmarked and protected and utilized for already approved projects?
And it clearly affects other projects in Mecklenburg and Union County. I mean, it's coming out of everybody's pot for that particular project.
Yeah. And just to be clear, the Catawba Crossings project is not shown on this, this map. But, you know, like I said, it has gone through the, the MTP process for us and for GCL. It was determined there wasn't funding for it. Again, I can't speak for, I can't even really speak for CRTPO and what will happen at the board level. But, you know, I'll tell you from the experience in the past, the reception's been, been lukewarm at best. But, but like Chairman Mallory said, the congestion levels, the safety benefits of pulling traffic off of 85 and Wilkinson Boulevard have just never been there for that project. But, you know, it is kind of recognized as more of a regional priority. That, that's really what that, that study that's looking at it right now is, what does that road need to be in the future? There's no funding assigned with it. But to Commissioner Hoop's point, you all can certainly pass a resolution or submit a formal public comment on behalf of this process to indicate your priorities and where you want to see the funding allocated. You know, the, the project list is pretty much set for us and for GCL. But again, that, that will kind of articulate as, as this rulemaking continues to happen with IIJA, that, that position would be valid for, for, you know, the process we're about to undertake with that.
Well, thank you, Neil. Very helpful. And I'd encourage people everywhere to go on the CRTPO website. And then you can find a reference to the Catawba Crossings for public input until, I think, February, middle of February, and, you know, share your thoughts. Because public input is a, is an important part of the CRTPO prioritization process. And it does make a difference.
So we just have a few more slides about just, you know, the public engagement period that we're in here with the 2050 MTP. Travis is going to close us out. I just want to make sure I've answered everyone's questions about the roadway funding and, and the whole funding issue.
Thank you. To build off your comments on public feedback, now is a great time to let us hear what your thoughts are. So we, we've collected all the information we shared with you tonight into the draft 2050 MTP, which is broken down into these nine different sections. So if you're, want to know what we've done for public engagement, you can go into Section 2 to read about history for what we've done for that. If you want to see what we're projecting financially, that's in Section 6 of the document. And if you want to see that project list, again, it's Section 7, where everything will be outlined based upon project limits, location. So all this is available for your feedback. So right now, again, we're in the last phase of this process that started in 2020. So for January and February, we are, or is sharing the draft MTP plan for public feedback and comment, moving towards March for adoption. So the public feedback period started in January 18th and is going to go to February 17th. The draft plan is available on the MTP website, which is 2050mtp.org. So on there, there's a form submittal where you can submit your comments on there. Additionally, if you'd like to send us an email, you can just email us at email@CRTpo.org and just provide us your comments and feedback. And all this information is also available on the website. So now is a great time to look at the plan. You have some time to digest everything that's in there. And we're really excited to just hear everyone, what they think about the plan. And so with that, we close out with any additional questions?
Any additional questions or comments, board members or staff? Okay. Travis and Neil, we thank you for taking the trip up. I'm sure that at the time you came up, you might have used the express lane. But you probably won't have to on the way back. Thank you again, and we look forward to continuing to work with you as partners for the planning organization CTEPRO's jurisdiction.
Thank you very much.
Okay. At this time, we'll move to Item 7, which is a public hearing to consider an economic development incentive for Project Layer. And Jen Bozer, I believe from the Iredell Economic Development Corporation, is here to do that presentation. Amy, do we have any sign up last? Okay.
Chairman Mallory and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to present this economic incentive request. I'm Jen Bozer, President and CEO with Iredell County Economic Development Corporation. With me tonight is Chad Thomas, Director of Business Development, and he was the primary leader for this project. So I'd like to recognize him. Iredell EDC is pleased to present Caselolowsky's Advanced Manufacturing, also known as Project Layer, for consideration for an economic development incentive grant from the Iredell County Board of Commissioners for the company's expansion. The project includes the addition of new machinery and equipment, an outfit to their existing facility located at 258 West Aviation Drive in Statesville. And the, the project is adjacent to the Statesville Regional Airport. And the expansion is an effort to expand CAM's ability to satisfy current customer needs and to acquire a new line of business in the defense contractor, contract sector. CAM is a vertically integrated simulation and design engineering company that has a serial production manufacturing component and additive manufacturing and CNC capabilities. It's comprised of top engineering and machining talent who excel within innovation, creativity, and problem solving. So a great company all the way around. Through partnerships with some of the world's leading manufacturers and research universities, CAM develops groundbreaking custom solutions for several industries, including aerospace, defense, energy, automotive, and performance motorsports. So in accordance with Iredell County's economic development policy, Iredell Economic Development Corporation requests an incentive grant to CAM for up to $52,608, based on a capital investment of a total of $4,785,000, and the minimum creation of 10 jobs, up to 16, at or above the county wage of $59,411. The grant is performance-based and would be payable over three years at 75% of the new assessed tax value. Payment is tied to the amount of the new incremental assessed value generated from the private investment of the company. On behalf of Iredell Economic Development Corporation, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for your consideration of this grant, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Could you confirm the economic incentive amount? What I have in my agenda notes is $75,313.
$75,000.
Over three-year period.
Chad, do you know? Thank you for that. Hold on.
We can, we can include that number, and if it's less, you can, because it's up to, I'd rather go over than under, and then you can...
Yeah. No, I appreciate you having that number. Let me double check. My number's correct. My number's correct. So it was incentive grant for $52,608.
$608 or 80?
$608.
Okay.
Based on a capital investment total of $4.785 million.
Yeah.
That's correct. Over three years.
Three years, yes.
Yeah.
All right. With that correction, I will ask if there are any questions or comments from commissioners of Ms. Bozer? None. I will open the public hearing. No one has signed up, to my knowledge, to be heard. I would ask if anyone present would like to be heard on this public hearing considering Project Layer, also known as CAM. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve an economic incentive up to $52,608 over a three-year period based on the company's investment of up to $4,785,000, with the creation of 16 new jobs and a contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Motion by Vice Chairman Neder. Any further discussion? I will note that when we vote, Commissioner Norman is participating remotely, and there's a delay between the time we'll call for the vote and the time when we hear his vote. So all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
You're unanimous. The motion is approved. And thank you, Ms. Bozer. You've had some great announcements and wins recently. Another big announcement, not official yet, I guess.
Yeah, coming.
To come out.
Staying busy.
Great news for Iredell County and Iredell County citizens in terms of above-average wages and significant investments in our economy, which is going to continue to...
Enable us to...
...to increase revenues while not increasing property taxes. You increase the tax base, you don't have to increase the tax rate to provide services. So thank you for the great work that your staff and the board are doing and in conjunction with our municipalities.
Yes, you're welcome. And I would just mention, you know, this is another retention of an existing industry, which it's a lot easier to retain and grow our local businesses. Actually, a majority of our growth is from local and local businesses creating jobs and making investments. And they have choice. They can choose to locate to another community. They can choose to, they have, they have multiple locations in other places. So sometimes when you see an incentive going to an existing industry, it's important to note that that is a competitive project, and they're making a choice to make that investment in this location. So, so we appreciate our, our existing industries continuing to grow here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to administrative matters that are appropriate for our consent agenda. These are Items 8.1 through 8.8. We, these are typically items that are presented by staff, and they're of a technical nature. And, and we hear those at our 5 o'clock hour. That is a public meeting. It's open to anyone that would like to attend, and we encourage folks to attend. What it does is it shortens the length of this meeting for everybody. So, and we already took care of registered deeds unless you'd like to be heard on, okay. So if, Ms. Mall, if you'd please summarize those for our consent agenda motion.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item is a request from Iredell Statesville Schools for approval to apply for a public school capital fund grant. And the total amount of grant funds being applied for is $90.1 million. That does require a 25% local match if awarded. A request from the registered deeds for approval to refund revenue stamps in the amount of $960 to Bimbo Davidson and Martin, PC. A request from emergency management for approval to allow the county manager to sign the updated statewide mutual aid agreement. This requires no funding, but it is an annual agreement with an auto-renew clause. A request from Parks and Recreation for approval of capital project ordinance and to accept a Carolina Thread Trail grant in the amount of $30,000, and this is for the design of that, that greenway and trail. A request from Parks and Recreation for approval to apply for a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant, and this is for the Jennings Park site. A report of unpaid taxes that are liens on real property and set advertising date, which was set for March the 16th, and currently we have $5.6 million. And their tax collection rate currently at this point is 96.11%, which is the highest we've had to date at this time period in previous years. A request from the clerk to the board for approval of minutes from the meeting on January the 18th, 2022. And finally, a request from the Finance Department for consideration and acceptance of the highest upset bid offer for Harmony Highway surplus property and to close the upset bid process. The, the bid amount was $35,000, and it was for 4,600 Harmony Highway.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments? I think just as a note, the request for the approval of the schools to apply for a public school capital fund grant, that's a grant that we've never been eligible for hitherto because of the economic strength of the county. Typically, it goes to lower-tier counties that are struggling. It's all, it's open to all 100 counties to be able to compete for funds. It's helpful to have projects that are already been approved and funded to some extent. And since we already have projects like the high school and some other... And since we already have projects like the high school and some other projects that have been approved in a master facilities improvement plan and funded through a bond referendum, then we have an opportunity and are hopeful that we will get some of those funds. I think it's about $365 million or so.
395.
395 million dollars of available monies from the state.
Lottery funds.
Yeah, they're from the lottery proceeds. So we don't know how we'll shake out in that, but if you don't ask, you don't get anything. And the good thing is, there's a sliding scale based on counties' economic circumstances as far as how much the match has to be. In some counties, it's zero, or it can go up to 25%. We're in the 25% category. But the funds that have been approved already for our construction bond meet that requirement. So there's no new extra dollars out of the county budget to be able to get a match approved for this particular grant. So we're hopeful that we'll hear relatively quickly, within the next month and a half or so, or maybe it's two and a half months, whether or not those funds will be available. So anything further? I think that was it. Being said, I'll ask if there's a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Vice Chairman Neder. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And we are unanimous. The motion passes. Move on to item nine. There are no announcements of any vacancies on boards or commissions, nor item 10. There are no appointments to boards or commissions this evening. Unfinished business, item 11. Ms. Mall?
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. This is an item that was discussed previous board meeting, and we had received some, or actually, the board opened up for citizens to submit questions regarding the masking mandate, the strong schools NC toolkit, and things of that nature that we would submit to DHHS to elicit some responses to those questions that we have received. And we received, two individuals submitted questions, and we submitted those as they were submitted to us. I did add three questions to the end, which are questions that we have received a couple of different times, and I added those three questions to the end of these questions. It was seven pages of questions, and we submitted those to the state. We did receive a response back to the state, and their initial response is that they were going to decline to respond to these questions because of the nature of some of the questions and the reference and some of the things that were in the questions. And some, for example, one of the ones that they pointed out was a question, basically it says, if you took an oath, did you use the sacred or non-sacred scripture, such as a Christian Bible or other religious texts, such as the Satanic Bible? They did not feel that that was a question that deemed a response. And there were some others. After talking to them, I did let them know that we did sincerely request that they provide us information and help us respond, because we are their local enforcement of those requirements. And we did request that they assist us in responding to these questions. And so we did actually receive a response. It was not a word-for-word response to every question that was submitted, but they went through and read the questions that were requested and submitted information. And some of them are, there were two, they sent two attached documents for reference and did respond. So I have that included in your packet, their response, and then the two documents that are referenced. And that response that has more detailed information, those are actually in your packet as well. The first document is the CDC Science Brief that goes through various points. And then there is another document, which is COVID-19 and the school's legal authority and requirements. And those are the two attachments that are included in your packet.
So most of these questions, not most, but a good number of them had been the subject of public comment earlier, and they were submitted as county manager has outlined. We got these responses at the end of last week. So they didn't go point by point, so we're having to sort of dig through the reference material that they sent in response to some of the more, some questions. And some questions, I suppose, aren't directly addressed anywhere, but we've got to kind of pick through the documents. So our plan is to be able to discuss that from our perspective and allow folks at the next public comment period to opine, and we'll resume that public discussion two weeks from now, I suspect. But we need some time to sort of pick through all the documents. Okay. Thank you for that update. Is there any new business? New business?
I have a question.
Okay. County managers report.
Yes, sir. Just announcement that our winter retreat is scheduled for Thursday, February 17th, from 10:00 noon to 5:00 p.m., and then again on Friday, the 18th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And this will be held at the Cooperative Extension Department. This is a retreat that we have each year that is more budget-related, where we get really good guidance from the board to help us in framing the budget for the upcoming year. So this is a two-day workshop, and hopefully I'll have the agenda complete in the next few days, and we'll have that out to the board, so you can, you'll know the items that we'll be bringing before you.
You said Thursday was 12 to 4?
Thursday is 12 noon to 5:00 p.m., and then Friday at 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Okay, now, I would just clarify that those questions that were submitted and the responses from DHSS are now part of the public record.
We actually have copies. We've made copies, if anybody would like to pick up a copy of the questions that were submitted and the response that we received.
Thank you.
Or they're low paid. Right, we can get them after the meeting. We have a whole stack right here.
Okay. We will now move into a, well, we'll just report out on our closed session relative to economic development pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A4. We received information, but there's no action to take this evening. We hope to have some action to take at our next meeting.
Right.
And there is also personnel issue pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A6, and there's no actions needed to be taken on that matter. So that brings us to the end. I believe there may be some comments that would like to be made.
I just wanted to congratulate, I think, Melissa, attending on behalf of the board to the Trinity Fire for Frankie Stockweather, put in 50 years' service to the county, and wanted to just thank all of our emergency services personnel throughout the county for what they do and the service that they render. Most and all of those times over those years has all been voluntary for the most part. So I just wanted to congratulate him and all that does what he does.
And I would like to give a shout out to our Assistant County Manager, Joe Pierce, who's been with us for almost three years, and this will be his last meeting with us as he is moving on to different opportunities. So thank you, Joe, for your work, particularly dealing with emergency services during a time of significant analysis and investment and challenges in terms of being able to attract volunteers to staff fire departments, as well as working through communications issues and posturing us for the future. So thank you for your efforts, particularly in regards to those endeavors. So that being said, is there anything else for the good of the order? Then I'll ask if there is a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Brown to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And Commissioner Norman makes it official. We adjourn. Okay.